Otter Creek Town Hall Meeting is tonight, and everybody thinks Russ the Sus is up to something huge. The monthly Otter Creek Town Hall Meeting is gonna be tonight at 7:00 PM. But before we can look at that agenda and figure out what's going to happen, which some big things are gonna happen, we kinda gotta look backwards to see what did and didn't happen. And first, if we go back two months ago, we all know Crook and Lynette were at Town Hall. They stated they were there at 4:45. They then were there for over an hour and a half, breaking, violating the legal civil protection orders. Now, they have criminal charges pending that are gonna go from Levy County over to Marion County. These two can do some very serious jail time. But wait, there is that documented, uh, report where Crook was brought into the Levy County detectives, where he was actually questioned, and he stated he had no idea George was there. Well, let's take a look if he was looking at her. They both stared directly at George, and Lynette has her temporary injunction papers from Florida against me. Not against George. She has permanent civil protection orders against herself on behalf of myself and George. Her temporary papers in her hand and her cellphone filming George mean absolutely nothing legally. They must remove themselves immediately, and they chose to break the law instead. This complete and total act of defiance could land them in jail in two different states. Florida is pressing charges right now. Ohio will be pressing charges. Now, in Ohio, it's a $1,000 fine, six months in jail for every violation. Of course, as you add those violations up, well, the consequences get bigger and better. Florida is a little bit tougher, a little stricter. It's one year in jail or a year on probation. Now typically, one violation would probably equal one year of probation. But when you add violation on top of violation on top of violation on top of violation on top of violation, they're looking at years of imprisonment. So the planet wants to know, will Lynette and Crook show up again tonight at the Town Hall Meeting? Well, there's a lot of polls going on out there, and I bet, you know what? You can probably put some money on this in Vegas, too. My money is gonna be on, yeah, they're probably going to break the law again. And in similar fashion, the planet wants to know, yeah, you're the planet in there for Judge Grudge. Judge DeThomasis, we all know he's watching. They wanna know, is Russ the Sus gonna show up? Will Don the Con show up? Because at the same meeting where Lynette and Crook show up, and they lie to the sheriff deputies and state that they have official town business, which means absolutely nothing. They legally can't be there even if they did have official town business, that they were gonna be approved to be on the council, which they can't be approved because they didn't legally fill out Form 6, and all these other surrounding lies. Russ the Sus, Don the Con, because they aren't getting their way with this attorney that they voted for, that they wanted, which costs the town residents more money. And all of the sudden, she's actually following the law. She's doing what's right. That's what lawyers are paid to do and to make sure that the town council does the exact same thing. But Russ the Sus and Don the Con aren't too happy with this anymore. Because two meetings ago, two individuals, both Carl Hughes and Joe, were supposed to be seated in the empty slots. Well, Russ didn't like that, and Don the Con didn't like that. Russ then goes, you know what? We're leaving. And Don the Con is told, sit down or leave. And he goes, no!
Have a seat or leave the room? No!
This whole issue is about who's going to sit on the town council. Remember, you have to have a majority vote to get anything passed or done. Russ and Don are butting heads with everybody else. They want everything their way. They want Otter Creek, frankly, a dump. They want Otter Creek to be filled with garbage. They want Otter Creek at its worst, where the rest of the residents want Otter Creek at its best. And therefore, there's a contention of a battle of who's going to do what, who's going to say what, and power. And the reality is, there is no real power in Otter Creek. It's a town of just around 100 people. I've had over 100 employees working for me at the same time, and most of the time, I felt powerless because I had to always take care of them, even though I hired those employees to take care of me and my business. This brings us up to speed to last month's meeting, where all of a sudden, a resident was not able to be there who was part of the town council. We're still not sure who it was, but we have a guess, and probably so do others. And George actually asked Don the Con about it. Because Don the Con shows up at Town Hall already knowing there's not a meeting, but he's the only one.
So you didn't know either? You didn't know?
I got an email, but they should still post it.
It is posted. It's posted right there. I don't know.
Why do you think they canceled it?
I don't know. I got here and that was there.
Why do you, why did you walk out of the meeting last time?
I did.
I know. Why did you walk out of the meeting?
Because they were doing something that was totally illegal.
What was illegal about placing board members?
You know exactly what it was. Don't play dumb then. Well, how come I didn't continue?
Russell was trying to put his minions in those seats, and they didn't apply for the seats.
That's not illegal. But it was illegal trying to post.
How does it feel?
You're funny.
We'll find out once we do next one.
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens.
Hey, Don.
How are you, George? How's everything?
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
At least I'm only up and up.
That's good.
And I hope you are.
Yeah, hanging in there.
This is the best we can do?
I know someone should have brought a keyboard. I only have a guitar.
Well, show up and give us some entertainment. Make it not work.
Hey, Don, thanks for coming tonight. I'm glad you came to give me play.
You should use two hands.
Well, I gotta hold the mic.
He'll hold it for you. So you're here for the meeting?
Yeah.
No idea?
Well, it's on the door.
You had no idea?
We found out when we pulled up.
Right here.
Yeah, Me Too.
Don the Con's part of the Me Too movement now, even though he previously already stated he received an email that he knew the meeting was canceled. And he's gonna say more things about that. As a matter of fact, Lynette and Crook knew that the meeting is canceled. Now, how do Lynette and Crook know that the meeting is canceled? Because that very day, Lynette is out with a four-year-old, yes, I know, this is disturbing, in a stroller on North Otter Creek Avenue, and tells other residents that she knows the meeting is canceled. Okay, first of all, let's dissect that. Lynette has stated in court she's paralyzed to her property. Number two, what is a four-year-old doing in a stroller? Developmentally held back and behind because of the neglect and frankly, the abuse that is happening. All right, number three, who is having these illegal conversations with Lynette? Well, it's pretty easy to figure that out. It's Russ the Sus and Don the Con. They're not allowed to talk about anything outside of Town Hall meetings, outside of the Town Hall meetings. And yet, it's happening. And that's what Don the Con is asking right now. Did you know about this? That's what he's fishing for. Did you know? Because if there was actual conversations outside of Town Hall meeting between individuals, that's not okay. And he's fishing for that even though he is the individual that is having conversations with Lynette.
You accusing them of lying?
Pardon?
Are you accusing them of lying?
Do you really have a way of convincing words?
No, he said when he got here that he got an email. He said he got an email.
What time did you get the email? What time did you get the email?
I don't recall.
He doesn't answer.
I guess we should call before we come.
Don's mad that the meeting is canceled. And it's canceled because a member couldn't make it. Yet, Don wasn't mad when he and Russell actually exited a meeting to make sure that nothing could be voted on, to make sure nothing could happen in that meeting. So I'm pretty sure they probably had the exact same, uh, plan, organized beforehand, communication. You know, they were going into this meeting before it was canceled, saying, we're gonna do the same thing if they try and seat these individuals who have been, you have to understand, okay? Town Hall has four seats available. Two of those seats are one year only. Two of those seats are two-year only. These two individuals that ran for the two seats that are one-year only have run unopposed. Therefore, they get seated immediately. These two individuals, there were three people that ran for these two seats. Then Stuart Stewart, he pulled his name out. And now, these two individuals, Don the Con and Laura Mott, not for Mott, are now going to be seated in these seats unopposed. As a matter of fact, all four individuals should be seated in tonight's meeting, unopposed, meaning nobody is running against them. Therefore, they win by default. No election is needed in Otter Creek. There is nobody to elect. Those who have filled out their Form 6, they'll be seated, and life will go on in Otter Creek. But Don the Con and Russ the Sus don't like that. Why? Because the individuals being seated will outnumber majority vote. Majority out of five is three. If you have Zim, Joe, Carl, that's three against, uh, Don the Con, Laura Mott, or Russ the Sus, who continues to state that he is not in a one-year term when Madam Mayor placed him in a one-year term. So he thinks he's gonna come to Town Hall, and he's gonna serve for a whole nother year. Did not fill out Form 6, does not have a two-year seat, and yet, he's still gonna try and play some game, try and do something. They've done anything and everything they possibly can so far. What we've heard is Russ the Sus has tried to file violations with the election committee because there's no election. How can you violate an election that can't even happen because there's not enough people running? There are no violations if there is no election, and there won't be an election because Stuart Stewart dropped out under the command of Russ the Sus.
Are overalls to a meeting?
No.
No, because you know the decorum.
Oh, you learned a new word. I'm glad to hear that.
Oh, sweetheart.
Don't call me that, please.
I haven't smoked.
You call me anything but that.
Do you think it was Russell that canceled the meeting and couldn't come?
Well, you know who canceled the meeting. Don't play that.
No, I'm asking, do you know if it was Russell? That couldn't come, and that's why the meeting was canceled?
I don't know why, but...
Don, do you think it was Russell that couldn't come, and that's why the meeting was canceled? Well, how do we know that? He's not here. Should we wait and see? Should we wait and see?
Who else isn't here?
I haven't seen Belinda yet. We're still waiting for the lawyer, Belinda, Russell, Zim.
I'm sure they got the memo.
Who's "they"?
People you just talked about.
Okay, I guess time will tell, right?
He came to my, my party. I call it circus theater.
It's really not much different than any other meeting I've had.
Right, it's a circus.
I find it odd, and I really don't use that word often enough in odd or creek, that Don is referring to outside of Town Hall as a circus. Now, what I see is a bunch of adults having a good time fellowshipping together. What I see inside Town Hall meetings is Don in one of the three rings of the circus. Ring number one, we've got Russ the Sus. Ring number two, we got Don the Con. And ring number three, we had Mary Mary, Math is Scary. This man has involved himself in a ridiculous circus that's being witnessed all over the planet. And he wants to then point fingers at individuals having fun outside of Town Hall and call them the circus?
Was it, was it Stuart that canceled?
Stuart has nothing to do with it. You know that.
Well, he was here last time. Do you think he's gonna show up today?
I don't know. Maybe Russell canceled the meeting.
I'm thinking. We don't know. I asked Don, and he doesn't know.
I don't expect anybody to tell us who canceled the meeting, but... She's a poser. Undercover's a poser.
That's the guy that usually comes.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
That's a Harley.
Whenever that is.
So they were supposed to fill the vacant council seats today?
Is that what it says? It says, new business qualifying results, filling the vacant council seats.
Yeah, they were supposed to do that again.
That was supposed to be today. Oh, they were gonna talk about the community. So that's like last year when they were supposed to fill the vacant council seats, and then they waited, and then they waited again.
But that was okay then.
Yeah, it's okay.
It depends who.
It depends on who's doing here.
So if Russell's calling the shots, it's okay. If anybody else is calling the shots, it's not okay. Everybody should know that by now.
Oh. I wonder what the resolution is. 2401?
It's like an interlocal agreement with the emergency operations.
This is the first time I've seen this.
It's just like a formality that they have to do with all the different towns.
I just realized something. Stuart's name is gone. Remember, there was three people? So Stuart Stewart dropped out, so he's definitely not coming.
But Don got an email that it was canceled, but Don still showed up. So I feel like he wants to be a part of our show.
Absolutely not. Come here to, uh, to watch the circus.
You are the circus there, Don. The ringmaster.
Did Stuart leave to go find a middle name?
Stuart Stewart. Yeah, he needs a middle name. Wouldn't it be Stuart?
No.
Wouldn't it have a trifecta?
Probably.
Stuart, Stuart, Stuart.
He told me his mom named him that because he'd have a hard time remembering another name. That's what he said.
Why does he have two names spelled differently?
His mom told me that he was named that because he'd have a hard time remembering a different name.
The mother or him?
It might have been both.
Oh.
But he said that his mom was looking out for him because she didn't feel like...
He must have not gotten the memo.
A different name.
Good thing he, uh, raced over here from his meeting. He probably wants to write his name down and say something. I think he did. Because you know it's all about the base, all about the base.
I find it odd, you know what? I am starting to say that enough. I really do. I think I am starting to actually say that enough. And for those who aren't aware, I'm actually mimicking, and I'm making quite tremendous amount of good quality fun of Don the Con, who said in a meeting, I find it odd, and I don't say that word quite enough, that Albert Fuller is here. So Russ the Sus and Don the Con let Lynette and Crook know that there's no meeting, but Albert Fuller has been a part of this whole corruption scheme. They didn't let him know? Remember, he lives in Williston. He has no property ownership whatsoever in Otter Creek. Now, he is married into family that has property ownership, and Williston's meeting is on the exact same night, which means Albert Fuller cut out of Williston's meeting early just so he could be over in Otter Creek to see the circus.
You need a lighter? You looking for a lighter?
Recording device.
Special recording devices.
I think they're in, uh, back in 1985.
Well, there you have it. Don the Con has just announced he is becoming a member of Tube Down, complete with Russ the Sus, Lynette, Crook, and everyone else who you could ever imagine. It seems wherever we go, George, that cameras follow. Now, there was a time when we first started filming in Ohio that nobody wanted a camera at any storage unit auctions. Now we go, and everybody has a camera, and they beg for us to be there to film. We got to Otter Creek, and nobody wants a camera. And now, Don the Con is begging for something to film and record with. Oh my goodness, I would have never thought in my life these things would happen to people just like me. Keep in mind, this whole battle and what Don is mad about is because Russ wants to seat who he wants on the council so he can do whatever corrupt things he wants to do. And the other people, the residents of Otter Creek, want good people on the council that aren't doing things behind the scenes, not sharing, non-transparent. Uh, we could even go into the aspect of biases versus partiality. We don't want a Judge Grudge. We want somebody who's fair for everyone, who actually looks out for the residents, who's doing things for the town as a whole.
You raced over here for nothing. There's no meeting. Nope, there's a sign on the door. I am a coecologist, but I'm not kidding.
There's a sign on the door.
Sign on the door.
No clerk, no show.
It says, no monthly meeting.
Yeah, that's what Russell says, ain't no clerk, ain't no show.
That's all you gotta do is be respectful.
I guess I could go catch my Williston City Council meeting.
Yeah?
So why do you think?
I'm sure it's an actual meeting with, you know, manners and, you know, the right way of doing things.
Seriously, they didn't tell you in the...
I bet they follow Robert's rules of order.
Who's saying, by the way?
I don't know. Who sent the memo? If they're not gonna share what happened, I guess we'll find out what happens when they open up tomorrow, if we wanna know.
It's no mystery.
What is a mystery is the reason that you walked out of the meeting. Because the only one that's here, we know it wasn't you.
I'm not gonna have to explain that because if you can't figure it out, then you'll never understand.
You're the only one here, Don.
Thanks, James.
Where's the rest of the people that are on the board? We know that it's not you. That's what we know, because you showed up. Well, no, he got an email. I know. He just wanted to come be a part of the show. Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't know who else on the board.
A young kid always wanted to come to the circus.
You can't have a circus without a circus master.
Not without the monkeys. Who brought the peanuts?
We got the popcorn. Where's the clown car?
I was hungry. That was my dinner. Can't we all just get along? I'm trying to get along.
This just seemed to be a repeat of the February meeting, you know, for obvious reasons.
What happened at the February meeting?
You tell me.
Last February meeting?
Refresh my memory, what happened February?
Well, you got a pretty good memory. It doesn't need to be refreshed.
I think he's talking about last year of February, around the time that Russell closed due to an emergency for three months.
So Don's referring to a February meeting. In the February meeting, if I am correct, and I don't remember 100%, but maybe I should ask George because Don thinks she has a really good meeting. Was that meeting, was that actually canceled as well, George?
The February meeting?
Potentially, it could have been.
Isn't that the one they walked out of?
Uh, yeah, I don't even, at this point, February, March, yes, it is. February is the one that he walked out of with Russell. So you have to understand, they walked out on purpose. It was a power play to block anything happening. So now, Don is, huh, well, this meeting got canceled, which very well could be a power play to block anything from happening by Russell, by anyone. So Don is okay if he plays the power play, but it's not okay if somebody else plays the power play. And the reality is this, something very serious could have happened. As a matter of fact, Carl Hughes, who's gonna be seated on the council, this meeting tonight, just had a life-altering accident. And it is a miracle, it is an act of God, truly, that he spared Carl's life as he had a motorcycle accident. The man could have bled internally to death, and we praise God that he's still with us to this day, that he's there for his family. He's here for the town and for all of his friends and coworkers.
12 miles from Bronson.
Okay, so Bronson's up 24. I know that.
Yeah, and then you take, at right, and go 12 miles that way.
Take alternate 27, south.
What time is the Williston meeting?
It starts at 6:00. But we usually, we usually end about 9:00. See, I just, I try to catch the first few minutes of the Williston meeting and then...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did Stuart Stewart attempt to...
Wouldn't Williston trump Otter Creek for you?
He was told no or leave, and then he left?
I'm a resident of Williston. It is important to me.
Yeah.
Otter Creek is important, too, because... We have family, we have family lands and investments here in, here in Otter Creek.
For these next two clips, you're going to see Don the Con is on speakerphone in a vehicle with Russell. So George is recording. There are conversations happening behind, and then eventually, she's gonna go to the car to try and see if she can capture that conversation with Russell. Don the Con's on to her.
On with somebody. Don is on the phone with someone, speakerphone.
It's beyond crazy. What is our job? It's hilarious. Thanks talking with you, sir. And looking forward to the future.
He says there's no real supporters here. That's what Don's saying.
Is he talking about Stuart Stewart and Laura? The people who ran for the seat?
What kind of supporters? People who support garbage all over their yards, which are safety hazards? In other words, no standards whatsoever? And by the way, if you want to dump garbage all over your yard, by all means, do it. But don't live within the town limits that say you can't. Go out into the country, go get you some acreage, and hide it behind all the woods and the trees. There's a real easy way to get around that. Real supporters actually want a benefit for all of their neighbors, for all of the residents. They want clean water, which still isn't here. They want individuals to actually have a clean environment to raise kids, which these individuals dump trash everywhere and push families and kids away. Real residents, real supporters, want healthy growth and business. It'd be great to have a gas station. It'd be great to have a Dollar General. Frankly, it'd be great to have a lot of things. But with thinking like Don the Con, Russ the Sus, in other words, the mentality of broke. If it ain't broke, let's break it, and let's break it until it can never be fixed again. Anything and everything will die under their tenure. And if we wanna talk about real supporters, I have yet to see Don the Con's wife at any of the meetings since I've been there. Now, I have been exposing her corruption, and I've yet to see Russ the Sus's wife at any of the meetings. Now, are they real supporters?
There goes Don. Don's leaving.
When I first moved to this town, none of the Strong's or Fuller attended the meetings.
Have you ever seen Laura Mott and Stuart Stewart or Don, the three that ran for a council seat this year, attend Town Hall meetings when they weren't on the council seat?
Laura did not, only when she was on the board. Stuart, the same, only when he was on the board. And Don was inconsistent. Sometimes he would, sometimes he wouldn't.
What about Dan Shannon? What about Dan Shannon?
Same, I don't think he came.
He never came unless he was on the board.
He even missed sometimes when he was on the board.
He even missed meetings.
Fell asleep, I think, during some of them.
Wow, I find that odd, too.
It is very odd.
And I've been here since 2019. It's been the same ever since.
Same thing, yep. Wow, how weird. You would think that if they cared so much about the town to run for the board, you would think they would attend Town Hall meetings, correct?
Absolutely.
It's weird that they're MIA.
What's going to happen at tonight's meeting? Well, honestly, it's anybody's guess. But I'm sure it's going to be dysfunctional, because these individuals know how to put fun in dysfunctional. And I do have the agenda right here. Frankly, it's the same agenda that it's been for the past few meetings, but if individuals actually stay, some things can get done. So the mayor's going to do the call to order, the pledge, and the roll call. There's going to be approval of the agenda. I'm sure there's going to be some issue with Don the Con about the agenda. There always is, and there probably always will be. Well, let's face it, Don the Con brings comic relief, if nothing else. Okay, we've got new business, swearing in new council members. Remember, no election, no need for it. You run unopposed, you get seated. Pure and simple. That means Don the Con runs for two more years. Not For Mott is going to be in for two years.